We'll go ahead and get started. Beth, do you want to start on the -- we'll cover what our next meeting is going to be, council meeting, what's on the agenda, and then we'll start looking at the budget again.
I passed around the tentative agenda where we're at today. We have through Thursday that we could add something to it. But basically, number four and five are the only two items that aren't budget-related. One, two, three, and six, and we'll probably move that number six up right under the budget since, and for the ones that have not been through the process before, any monies that we give to a nonprofit, we have to do a resolution publicly that we're giving to a nonprofit. So it is budget-related. It's actually right out of that page of the budget. But on number four, our second reading of the Cherokee Trail subdivision from R2S to R1, and then we also have a certificate of compliance for the tennis court package store, and that's just a technicality, something that they have to do on an annual basis. So those are the only two items that we have to discuss on that, other than budget.
Okay. Okay, council, we worked through last week, last Thursday, I think it was, our budget process, and I made some recommendations at that time. And Martha Carroll has given us, provided us with a updated scenario based on a 20-cent tax increase. And let's see, we had also put day on the hill back in. My recommendation was one and a half percent raise for employees to be used as just a pool of money, and then suggested that we work with Ms. Roden and Christie on some kind of formula on how to distribute that among the employees, possibly based on merit and performance. And we also put, or the Dogwood Festival is also in this proposal. So you've had an opportunity to look at this. The only thing that I have thought about that I'd failed to mention last time, as we work toward and complete our retirement process and get that changed over, that would have a positive impact on our budget as well. So that'll be a plus for budget going forward. Also, and I can't put my hand on it, but Darrell, you and Brian, I think, had worked through, I had asked you about if there was anything in recreation that you might could do or do differently, and any recommendations or ideas that you had. And you came up with some of those, and we failed to discuss those. We need to bring those up, and I think between you and Ms. Roden, y'all can probably remember what those were. You may have them with you, I don't know. But, and see if that's something that would, you know.
Is there a copy?
Yeah, if you don't care. It's probably not anything that would have, you know, a real significant impact on the budget, but it's still something that we may want to look at, or we may want to table it and look at it later, as far as any changes that we might want to make on the fees in regard to recreation. So Darrell's going to make that copy for us, and we'll give him an opportunity to talk Had one of the councilmen ask me just a moment ago about the library law, and I know that we, you've advised us that there is a law there, and is there a way, some way that you might could just?
Want a copy of it, so?
Yeah, you know, just so we can satisfy our mind, you know, in our own reading of it, that, because that, it just seems like that's kind of an odd law, that we wouldn't be able to change that. If you could just get us a copy of that, that'll help.
Let's have a copy of your difficulties. Instead of saying Darrell wants to have a copy of your difficulties.
Darrell, Darrell, do we need to send you to copier school?
Well, I had to get my glasses, like, so I didn't.
I think that we all, when we received this, had an opportunity to look at this, and Darrell, is there anything in there that you feel like that needs to be, needs to be changed? Not necessarily that we can just, you know, get by with changing it, but that actually deserves a change.
All the ones that, right there, have docked, the increase in swimplex prices, that's something that's, me, from Chicken Tama and Manchester, they're cheap. We could go up, it wouldn't hurt us, it probably, you know, should help us. The swim team rental, I think, is a definite you need to do. The admission price going to $5, it's not going to hurt. I mean, it's not going to make a lot of money, but it's not going to cut down the people that's there, is what I'm saying.
Do you have a bill for, and you may not, I don't, Brian, Lee, as far as using the swimplex, how many people go through there? How many people would be paying this fee?
I'm sure they, hey, has it docked, you do, and I don't have, you cannot have access to it.
They have a daily sales sheet that they turn in, so we could easily look and get an average.
And swim lessons, I think, I think Brian A. said, he's got here, stay the same, which that's usually booked up. And the private parties, the semi and the private parties to raise those prices, they're still going to have those parties.
So that would be one that probably would want to do?
Right, yes. And then, you know, we've got down here about the boat rent charge, but I don't, that's, you're talking more money to do that.
No.
So that's nothing that's going to work. Plus TVA would have to approve it. The pavilion, the citizens' pavilion, to raise it, I think is, they're still going to rent that, because it's booked nonstop. And he says, considering charging for use pavilion during events, and I'm assuming that's for events, the events that the city's not sponsors of, or whatever, I don't know how that's really, Ms. Beth may be able to know more about that than I am.
Which one?
The considering charge, charge for the use of pavilion during events, especially when it's loses, when you lose rental time.
Well, like, yesterday, we had the, I had a nonprofit call about using it in June, free of charge. I don't let them do that. But when we do donate it, we do lose, because the only time that we're 100% booked is on weekends. We are booked every weekend. So if we give it out over that weekend for, you know, a benefit, or whatever it may be, we're losing. And what are we getting? I think it's 150 on the weekends, and maybe a little bit less during the week.
1.5, I believe. Or weekdays, 100. 4.5, actually, once, I want to go to 100. So I want to go to 200 on the, on the citizen pavilion.
And for what you get, that's inexpensive.
Yeah.
You've got tables, chairs, and kitchen. I mean, that's a lot.
To me, it seemed like if you're having a ball event, and for some reason you can't get to the pavilion, one of the pavilions, because of them in there, you want to charge the ball team for the use, for the time of the pavilion.
We just try not to rent the, those out when there's big tournaments, like this past weekend, we just didn't rent.
Yeah, because we usually have just lots of complaints. If there's a huge fishing tournament, like that first of April, where there's just tons of boats everywhere, it's just best not to even rent it. Or if somebody insists that they need it, we tell them, there's going to be boats everywhere in your front yard, and you don't want to have a wedding there that day. Because we've had that happen before. People book way, way, way in advance, and then there'd be some kind of big, something going on down there, and it was...
Just like this weekend, there's no way you can have a pavilion. Except the red male citizens.
Yeah.
Because there was just so many people around. The ball field rental, right now, it's at $50 a field per day, which has worked pretty good. We went down last two years mainly because of the people that used to host tournaments have retired, or quit playing, or, you know, quit hosting the tournaments. But just like this past weekend, we, you know, it'll be $450 is what we got from the girl prom for the fields. This year didn't work out so well, because we worked so much, but it rained. But last year, it didn't rain a drop, so, you know. And then the last one there is the Frank County schools to pay, rent the fields, tennis courts, swimming pools for the use, if they do. I mean, those are all just suggestions. I think a lot of those, the swimplex, will be definite, we can do.
Well, you know, all of those, probably combined, if we, if we made those adjustments, it's probably, I mean, it's not going to...
It's a minimum amount.
Not going to impact the budget significantly. I would suggest that we bring this back up after we get through the budget process, and look at that again, and then make any kind of adjustments that we might feel like that would be necessary.
This, I will mention, the swim team contract renews January 1 on that, on their rental agreement.
I believe it's a thousand a month, and it's for 11 months, not 12 months.
Okay. So we, you know, if we're going to look at that, we need to be doing that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, everybody's had an opportunity to look at the, my recommendation. Do we have any, anything that we need to talk about, or tweak a little bit, or a lot, or any suggestions? Because we are on a timeline here, and as I said last time, we've been working on this for over a month, and not really seem to be making any headway. And I think now we've got at least a base to work from, and we need to have a budget ready for, for first reading at our next council meeting, which will be next Tuesday night. So it's important that we find a budget that, that we can, that we can support. I would hope that all of the council will support the budget, but that certainly, you know, each person's prerogative, but we do need to at least get a consensus of, of the majority of the council to move it forward. So any, any comments or suggestions?
Well, I liked your recommendations, and I thought the major points were good. I think it's something that we all, after we all thought about all the various things that went back in, I think, it seemed to me the consensus was those things should be But I have been thinking since last week, a lot about two things. One, I know it's been, it's a cliche almost, and I, you know, I don't want to be, but I'm going to say, you know, our employees really are our greatest resource. I mean, we can have all the widgets, and chippers, and fire trucks we want, but you've got to have the folks to do it, and run that equipment, run those machines, and interact with the public. Quite frankly, thinking back to when I was daily involved with Dogwood Festival, I can't think of a time when I didn't ask a Winchester employee to help with something, or to do something, or to, you know, help us out with something that, you know, they didn't just bend over backwards to do it, you know. And we really do have a good group. And I know we've increased recently the amount of holidays they get, and those types of things. But I really think in today's market, especially considering that $10 an hour type employee at the lower end, I think we should seriously consider at least 2% instead of 1.5. I think the difference might be about $15,000 or $16,000. But I would recommend, I would suggest, that's one input I have. And the other one is, on the tax rate, you know, we've talked a lot about, we haven't raised taxes for 20 years. I'm, I'm for one that would, you know, if we're going to have to have a tax increase, I don't know if we can do it and not have to do it again for another 20 years, but I'd like for it to be as effective for as long as possible. I just, I don't want to, you know, get into a situation where we get into a routine of going up 20 cents on the tax rate every third year, or something like that. But, so, that being said, my suggestion would be to go with, I think it was Ms. Roden's original suggestion, at 30 cents, and 2% for employees. And I'm really good with the rest of what we've done, and I know it wasn't, we didn't get there, it was, it was no, it was a lot of discussion, and give and take to get to where we, to where we've gotten. And I, again, thank Mayor Harrell for the recommendation last week, because that did kind of get us, kind of zeroed in a little bit. But that's my, that's my opinion and my suggestion, so if anybody wants to comment on that, or add to that, whatever the case may be.
I have a question. Everything that we had discussed over the last four to five weeks, we had taken items out to try and lower the red number. Has everything been put back in? What has been, what is still out? I mean, it's hard for me to decide, because even on the nonprofits side, I saw where most of those have been put back in, and...
I know they were put back in, after reviewing what y'all did last week. I know that Dogwood was put back in. The majority of what comes to my mind are the individual line items that we just went down to the bare minimum.
Did put in.
We left all that.
Tourism is still there.
Tourism, fireworks are still out. A lot of our memberships to things, we just went through and said, what do we absolutely, 100% have to have to survive, and we cut everything out. Those items are still gone.
Retail development, what did you have in there originally?
Originally, well, it was $50,000, but then a grant for 29-something, I think, it was going to cost us about $25,000.
I'd like to see that put in there, put anything back, because I think we need that to go. We've got to generate sales tax, because that's what we thrive on. And I know driving down Jackson Street yesterday, you told all my friends, I noticed four projects going over there right now. So business are expanding, and we need to get our share out of it.
Do you remember the exact number of them? Uh, not 8,750 is the grant, so it would be basically 30,000. If you went with the one company? There are other options. But we've already been awarded basically the, the 8,750.
If we have a 20-cent tax increase, after the property is reassessed, is it going to go up even more? I mean, I...
If you set the tax rate, it's going, that's going to be consistent. Now, you might have more money coming in if the values change, but that wouldn't affect your 20-cent tax increase.
Okay.
But they'll still be paying more taxes if their property is assessed higher.
New buildings and things like that.
That's what I said, if the values go up.
It's hard to forecast what's, as far as that, I don't know what else to say.
I mean, we don't know if they're going to move up or down.
As far as the building permits, and did we take into consideration the new homes and things at Twin Creeks?
Well, they're on the, tarot is just property right now, and that's the way we have it in the budget. Hopefully, there will be some homes built pretty quick out there, but we won't realize that for another year out. So it's not reflective in the 2017 budget. It would be, we should reflect it in the 2018 when we forecast. So I guess we could, you know, the first half of this year, or, you know, the first nine months of this year, we'll see what's happening out there, and that'll change probably some of the numbers that we've got here, because on the 2018 forecast that you have in your budget is basically a copy and paste from 2017.
And I've mentioned this to Martha Carroll yesterday, someone had mentioned to me, for instance, are those six or seven salaries increases from that federal government law?
They're in there.
They're in here, because, he told me, he thought we were exempt from that, he did not see where we would be in line for that, and we really needed to check that out. And he said, besides, if you go ahead and figure in those salary increases, he said, what if the new president repeals that law? He said, it's not like you can give somebody a $2,000 salary increase and then take it back.
Right. Chrissy's working hard to try to get us more information. There was supposed to be a webinar yesterday, and we missed it because of Eastern time, but they're going to send her the actual electronic copy.
I have not, but I've talked to other municipalities in there, to know when the cashing point would be there from that rule.
What he said, though, was really, it'd be interesting for you to hear what he had to say.
Sure, absolutely. I'll call.
Well, I think, my understanding is, that amount was going to be budgeted, to be studied between now and the end of December. And because, if it's budgeted, doesn't mean that those salaries are going up by that amount. The study has to be done between now and December, and then, once they figure out where they fit, then if any adjustments were made, it'd come back to the council to be done so or not.
That's correct. Just for the budget purpose, we did put it in there for all of them. I mean, it is a possibility that we may not choose to do it on some, we may, if they fit in the correct category, we may choose to pay overtime, instead of bumping them. But we'll have to do the test, the salary test, to see what they fall under, and get some more information on the law.
Well, wouldn't that have to, once we get, we know the results of the test, if you will, before we actually implement that, those increases, salary increases, wouldn't they have to come to the council as a recommendation to do, though?
I don't know that it would have to, but we certainly would.
So, I mean, as long as we would ask that those would come to the council, before they would just be implemented, then I think that's another safeguard that the council, or comfort that the council would have, to at least review the recommendation and the results of the, of the test, to see what might apply and what might not apply, before, before those funds would be used.
I think Chrissy could make a presentation at some point to the council, and go individually on each employee, and how they came out. And she can make that phone call and try to get some more information on that, too. If we find out different information, we always have an opportunity to change it before the first reading.
One other question. Since I'm still relatively new, first budget. Is our situation as a result of overspending, or are revenues down?
Revenues really aren't down. I don't know that I would call it overspending, but we chose to do some projects, and those were the big hits, the projects that we've done.
Like over a period of time, or just for this coming year?
Oh, no, over a, over a period of time.
I'd say one of the big drivers, in my mind, is the cost of federal government regulations and health insurance. It's been a huge driver. Cost for health insurance has been steadily going up for the 20 years that we haven't been raising taxes.
And another big cost has been our retirement.
Retirement is probably the number one. It has been steady on the, at least for the last four years, at pretty huge amounts.
Speaking to what Council, Sneak's talked about while going, our pay raises, if we do a 2% raise, and we're doing the 20-cent tax increase for FY '17 and '18, we're still over a million, three, million six for our fund balance. And we're right, in '19, FY '19, we're right under a million dollars. So I think that would be doable, especially with revenues projected to increase, and savings from retirement changes there, and looking into our health costs, hopefully we can reduce those to, by shopping.
Yeah, I just, I added the bit about the increase on the tax rate, simply just to, you know, not to have to have a rate increase very often, at all. You know, we've gone a long period of time without one, and that was, that's my main reason for mentioning that.
Well, we could see it come down if we got more retail business.
Yeah.
And things, and so, I don't think we should jump it up that much right now. Let's keep it for a year and see how it does, because retail business might bring in enough taxes...
Right.
That we wouldn't have to go out and keep going with that.
And of course, the tax rate can always be reduced in the future, too.
We don't want to go up in damn if we don't need them. I mean, not everybody gets a raise. You know, there's many apartment place that has to give a raise in three years now. We need to look at that.
Yeah, I know we put a lot of emphasis on Twin Creek development, but I think even the mayor addressed it in the last work session. You're looking out there at not only real property and property taxes, but you're looking at personal property taxes out there, and a huge, hopefully, a huge increase in sales tax.
Sales tax.
So that's going to be three different sources of revenue.
Eric, and I just want to think, I'd like for y'all to consider adding back some money into tourism. We get a matching tourism grant each year. Last year, we got a matching grant, we put in 4,000, and the state put in 4,000. And one of the things we're doing at the end of this month, Willie, is we have a videographer coming in, and we're doing a recruitment video for recruiting business to Winchester. At the same time, we'll be doing another video for Dive Into the Great Outdoors, but we typically, in the past years, have been getting $1,500, and we've been really working hard to become a favorite child with the Department of Tourism, and they gave us 4,000 this year. If it's feasible, and the monies, I would just like... If it's feasible, uh, and the monies, I would just like, it would be, you would be putting down 8,000 in tourism expense and adding 4,000 as a tourism grant. So, it would basically cost the city $4,000. But, um, we do lots of projects, um, and it's made possible through that grant.
That would be good, but is there 4,000 we can cut from somewhere else? Still keep it kind of...
I think we put 20 in for Hollywood, we can put 4 in for tourism, because that's the idea with Hollywood.
Right, right, and I'm all for the tourism.
And tourism's the same type thing.
You know, every year, you talk about apartments are coming in under budget. How much are they gonna come in under this year, do you think?
Well, we've already cut. So, it's not gonna look like they come in under budget at all because this estimated FY '16, we've already cut everybody's.
But this money, if we save from the budget from this present year's budget?
We saved quite a bit.
Now, where's that money showing up at?
Well, it's, it's already back in the, the fund balance because we've already gone through and cut what we thought we would save this year.
Did you add that to the fund balance?
It automatically, it automatically added itself. When you don't spend it, it automatically adds itself.
Well, the, the 20 cent tax increase, and I guess I have mixed feelings about doing 20, and that was my recommendation, uh, doing 20, and that'll get us a couple of years and into, uh, the third year, uh, just a little under where we would want our fund balance to be. But we'll have those years to recognize increases in revenues, uh, recognize, recognize those opportunities. And I, I really feel like that, that we'll be on track with 20 cents. To what Jean said, uh, in regard to, uh, just going ahead and doing 30 and so we don't have to come back and do again later, you know, that, that makes sense. Because I, you know, I don't think any of us want to, uh, bounce this around very often as far as tax increases are concerned. 30 cents would certainly increase our fund balance significantly as opposed to the 20 of my recommendation. But then again, you know, I hear people talk about, uh, that they would rather see it incrementally raised than just all at one time. So, I, you know, I, I think we're gonna have just mixed response to that. But, uh, if, if you do the 30, you know, you're certainly gonna look much better in your fund balance for a longer period of time in addition to the increases that we would, that we would see coming. The, uh, the 2% raise, Jean had indicated that would add about $15,000. And, you know, the, the fund balance that we would be maintaining, uh, over the next two or three years, would be impacted by that $15,000. In addition, if, if next year we were to, uh, come back and do a, uh, say, go back to 2.5%, well, then that would, uh, increase that just a little bit more. But, uh, at the 20, uh, the 20 cent tax increase with the 2%, I mean, there's still, still money there, funds there to support it. As to what Yvonne was talking about, the $4,000, um, you know, every little 4,000 that we add or take away, you know, it adds up. I mean, there's no question about that. And, and we need to take all of those things serious. But, uh, in the case of tourism, um, you know, we very well may get our, uh, bang for the buck on that $4,000 with a, a $4,000 match toward tourism. And that's promoting, uh, promoting Winchester. So, Willie, Willie made a comment about the, uh, what was it, the, uh, not marketing, but, uh... Recruitment. You know, with all the things that we've done over the past few years in Winchester, around the square, in an effort to try to bring people, not only visitors to our community, but we also would like to have, uh, new businesses come to the community. And I think we've, we've seen that, we've evidenced that by, uh, when Hammers relocated and, uh, that basically entire side of the square brought on new businesses. But, uh, you know, I mean, we, we have to keep, um, keep our name out in the front in, in an effort to try to bring new businesses to our community, not necessarily just to the square, but inside the city of Winchester. So, uh, you know, I, I, I think his comments in regard to recruitment, uh, has mirrored as well.
Councilman Snead, I'm sorry, I don't like 30 cents. I don't. I'm not big on tax increases, period. 20 cents is, that kinda takes my breath away, but 30 cents, no.
Yeah, I'm not big on tax increases either. I never thought I'd see myself being supportive of any kind of tax increase. It's, kinda goes against my whole philosophy, but, um, my 13th budget here in Winchester, and, uh, you know, we've, uh, we've done a lot of things and come a long ways. And I, I, I would dare say that we're probably, uh, one of the soundest cities our size in the entire state of Tennessee, as far as what we've done and where we are, where we're going. But I can understand the apprehension to 30 cents and, you know, I just threw it out there, food for thought. I'd really like to go at least another 20 years before we have to talk about any kinds of tax increases again. I completely understand that, Seal.
You had asked the question, have we put everything back in? I just opened to general government because I was just curious if something had changed since, um, I was president. But we reduced, uh, subscription dues by 4,000, which is pretty big for us. We reduced tourism from 10,000 to zero, so that's what we're talking about.
A bit more back in tonight.
Okay. Um, beautification, we reduced by three. City promotions, y'all did put in eight, but we still left out the other 12 that was originally in there. Um, and of course, the fireworks, and that's just from one page. It's just an example of how, even if something was put back in, it was put back in at a much lesser amount than original. You know, we've really reviewed, uh, we've met with, uh, department heads to, you had asked us about creative scheduling. We really put a lot of thought into that. You know, I just don't see anything that we really could do differently that we're not already doing. I feel like the department heads are putting a lot of effort in, in watching everything. You know, in Gary's case, he fills in himself to cut down. Dennis's, we went through, we're at, uh, a much reduced rate than what we probably could have been. I think it was around the 180 if we filled every spot, and he doesn't do that. Daryl's really good about taking a lot of the hours himself and not, uh, putting it off on the hourly employees. So, I mean, we've put a lot of thought into looking and possibly combining. I don't know what else we could do. And for the ones that have been here the last five years, if you would take the last five budgets and put them side by side, you would see it. You would see some items increased that we had no control over, mostly utilities, health insurance and retirement, but all other line items have reduced.
Just a, a question on page four, um, the general government salaries. Why '17 jumping up 18,000, but then in...
I actually probably need to move that to this year. We expected a retirement next year.
Then it's gonna fall back.
Then it falls, that's why 18 falls back down, is there was a retirement and we have certain payout of vacation and sick.
But it's actually gonna happen in this fiscal year, so, um, that, that will be moved. Employees that have been with us over 20 years are entitled to their sick time. That's a, that's in our policy manual. This particular employee has been with us that long, so, um, not only that, but any, uh, vacation that they have on the books, you know, we write a check and get it off the books when they leave. So, we have to put money in there to account for that. So, we forecast in every department who we think could possibly be retiring, and we make sure that we've got those monies in there. And many years, I, I know in public works, we forecasted for five years, and we just keep moving it because it, it never happened. But that person or two people could walk in that day and say, okay, we're gonna give you a month's notice or two weeks' notice, and then if we don't have the money, that would hurt us. So, we go ahead and put it in there. So, it's in other departments, too.
Is that a state law that you have to pay him for?
No, no.
It's not in our policy manual.
No, it's just in our policy manual. That, um, oh, only, only if they've been here over 20 years. Yeah, if you were hired after a certain date, it doesn't apply. But I think that was January 1st, 2014, if I'm not mistaken on the date. Anyone hired after that date, it doesn't apply to. But it was kept in effect for the employees that started prior to that.
So, have we, have we all agreed then that the $4,000 in tourism should be put back in?
Yes.
Okay. Are we, uh, what, what do we have for recruitment?
Um, it was a $50,000 originally, and then we had lowered it. But there's a $20,000, 19,750, um, map that we would receive in revenue, um, with the grant. So, it really depends on if you want to try to use just that. We still have to make the match, though, don't we?
Yeah, we still have to make a 20% match.
We still have to have a 20% match.
A match of the 19,000, okay, so...
So, we'd have to spend 20% more than that.
So, it'd be about, what, $4,000?
We could, our total maximum amount, amount that we can receive is now 10,750. But like, say, if we spend 20,000, we would have to match 20% of it. If we spend 25, but the maximum we can get in reimburse, reimbursed is 19,750.
I mean, the minimum we could put in there to receive the 19,750 would be 23,700. That would be our 20% on top of that, to receive every penny that we were awarded or anything above that amount. The one particular group that we met with was a $50,000 fee for all that information. But, um, like I mentioned, we, we have been looking into some other companies. They don't provide the data that we really value and would like to have, but they do provide services, um, to go out and reach out to these particular retail establishments. They have those connections, that's what they do. So, you tell them a particular property and they look at retail, um, people that look at your demographics. And then they go try to open that door to get them to come to your town. So, there's two, you know, there's actually, it would not have to be a $50,000 line, is what I'm saying.
But to get our, our 19,000, almost 20,000, dollars, that line item would have to be what?
At least 23,700.
So, you'd be spending, you'd receive 19,750, so you get, you'd be spending about $4,000 that would actually come out of your, your expenses that you would see. It would net, the net of it would be a $4,000 expense.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
If we put 23 in, then...
We're gonna show 19,750 as a revenue.
As revenue, and so we spent about 4,000, basically 4,000. What, what have, what's, what's the, the feeling on that?
I think it'd be worthwhile, myself.
I think it would be, too, I mean, you know...
Are we discussing the 23,700, is that the number we're discussing?
Yeah, uh, you know, the way, nobody wants to increase property taxes because it falls on the owners of property, which is, you know, you, you wanna grow your sales tax base, everybody, you know, pays sales tax. And, uh, that's, that's, that's the much preferred way to raise revenue. If we can be successful recruiting some good sales tax generators, that's definitely what we need to do, I think.
So, I've got a couple that indicate that they would be okay with that?
Me, too.
Okay. So, if we put that back in, 23...
700. And we would add a revenue of 19,750.
The bottom number will be changed by 8,000. Between the tourism and that.
Okay. Still doable within our 20 cents. And certainly doable on the 30 cents. Okay, let's, uh, let's kinda talk about where we, if, if we can get a, reach a consensus on the, the tax rate, where we feel like that that needs to be.
20 cents.
All right, 20 cents. What's, anyone else got any ideas or...
I, I would agree, 20 cents.
So, I've got, that's a couple.
I'm good with that.
Jean's, Jean's okay. Anyone else?
Can't drop it just a little and still stay ahead of the game?
Well, Seal, I guess, I mean, I, I guess we could, but we need to get, we need to get ahead of the curve. And, uh, and, and, and we've already now put, uh, you know, another $8,000 back in. I'm afraid if we make it any lower, that it would, it might force us to have to look at the tax increase on down the road sooner anyway. So, that's just my thought. 20 cents, um, I did, I did the calculation on, uh, Bruce, you, you kinda checked me and make sure I'm saying this right, but if we have a property that's valued at $200,000, it's assessed at 25% of that. That's $50,000, then is what the, the tax is, is calculated on, is that correct?
The assessment.
The assessment, excuse me. And currently, uh, under the, our current tax rate, it's about $411 on that property. Currently. And if it were to be a 20 cent tax increase, uh, that would change it to about $511. About $100 on a $200,000 property, uh, you know, less than $10 a month is, is kind of giving you an idea of where, where those numbers kinda...
Look at the commercial rate is 40%. You have to look at that.
Well, that's right, I didn't, I didn't calculate anything on the commercial rate.
See, all duplexes are considered commercial rate. All you retail properties and stuff like that's commercial, so...
Yeah.
That's right, that would, in fact, in fact, that a bunch, now, that's the reason I like to keep taxes down.
Yeah.
We don't wanna run businesses out of town because we've got a high tax rate, although everybody else has got one higher than we do.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't wanna give them a shot, well, I'll just leave town then. Let's keep what we got, don't scare them out.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it sounds like, then, that the consensus is the twenty cents. What do we feel about the salaries?
What's the cost of living adjustment for this year?
I'd have to look it up.
I don't know.
It's less than, I think it's one point two five or so. So if other places are not giving it, why are we giving it? After, I mean, I don't wanna be the bad guy of the town, but if other cities and factories and things are not giving out big adjustments, why do we give more? Because we've just increased the, holidays, pay for uniforms, the majority of the people in town, they've got a real good vacation planned, most of them settle back in one or two weeks. So I think one and a half is plenty for, the way the adjustment is for the year.
I agree.
You agree?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't wanna be the bad guy of the town, but I don't wanna give the town away, neither.
So it sounds like we've got a couple that might support one and a half, and a couple that would support the two, two percent. Any other, any other thoughts?
Where are you on it, Jeanie?
I don't know. I get chewed out too much when I say anything. Just briefly, Tina, I wanna answer a question that the mayor asked me the other day about how long I've been on the council. It doesn't matter if I've been on a minute, or a day, or ten years, I need to be treated with respect. And the only way I can find out things is to ask questions and to make suggestions.
But you've been in business, and you know how it is to run a business.
Yeah, I do.
Now, what is your opinion on the raises?
Well, I mean, it's hard to do, but I do also value employees.
Right.
And my feeling is employees also, you know, can work for you because they respect you, or they can work against you because they don't. And not only, you know, is money a big factor in that, but also how we treat people. So I hear a lot of complaints from a lot of employees about how they're treated and different things. So I think we need to work on that a great deal also. We need to be fair to everybody. But I don't think I would have a problem with the two percent. But that's on a merit basis, not across the board.
All right. I agree with that.
A man goes out and delivers furniture on city's time, you don't wanna give him a big raise in.
A city employee delivering furniture on city time?
It's been told. I don't know if it's true to it or not, but he had his truck, and he had the furniture, got me blue furniture.
Well, I think if that's the case, I think that we need to have a personnel meeting and address that with the city administrator. But I think, too, in 2012, the council approved a plan for payroll and did a study, paid several thousand dollars for that study. And I think it's our responsibility as, as the council to continue to fund the expenditures, including payroll, and move forward. I'm certainly for the two percent. The study actually indicated, as we all know, two point five percent. And, but, you know, if two percent is all we can give, I certainly think that that's where we ought to be.
So it sounds like, then, that we've got a consensus, then. You know, I think that something that's coming out of this budget process this year is the fact that we are realizing and recognizing that it's even more important, and will be even more important going forward, to, to work smarter and not necessarily harder. That I think it's got everybody's attention, I know it has, on the council, to, to watch the budget process even closer. And I think we've done a good job in not amending the budget throughout the year in years past. But things that come up during the year, I mean, there's gonna be some emergencies that we have to deal with, but any luxuries that come up during the year, you know, I think we probably need to, to look at those and with a real hard look whether we spend any extra during the year that's not, not within our budget. And I think that the employees and the department heads this year probably have, and are realizing that, that the budget is certainly scrutinized much closer, and that they are gonna have to start working smarter as well. So I, I mean, I, I think that there's positives that's come out of this, just from a standpoint of department heads and employees in the council as well. So it sounds like, then, that we've, we've got a budget at twenty cents, two percent, salary adjustment. And Christie, we'll ask, she, we'll ask Christie and Ms. Roden to certainly work towards some kind of way to implement merit increase based on performance and not just across the board within that two percent. And we've made an adjustment for tourism and for recruitment.
I'll get that out tomorrow.
Are we gonna get copies of the ordinances this time?
Yeah, same as, I feel like we're pretty comfortable with our numbers, and they're not, I will get that, what copies of the ordinances out.
Okay, any, anything else that we need to look at or consider? And Martha Carroll, if y'all would get us just to satisfy ourselves on that law, you could give that to us. Anything else that we need to look at or consider?
I'd like to see us face considerable, doing away with some positions, or since we gotta do the salary thing, I think it needs to be looked at really hard. Who's doing what, and if some things can be eliminated.
That's why I think we do need to have a personnel meeting, because I have an issue.
Okay.
Message was this long from somebody that I will share with you, but if we had a personnel meeting.
Okay, okay, we could do that, yeah.
And probably wouldn't be a bad idea, because we're going through segregation of duties and things from the state that we're having to do in the cut office. So that would give everyone an opportunity to, to learn a little bit more about.
Well, Seal, let me ask you, are we gonna try to, I'm not sure we have enough time, but are we, are you suggesting that we try to have this meeting make any recommendations, implement those recommendations to impact the budget? Or are you suggesting that we go ahead with the budget as it stands right now?
Yes.
But, but have that meeting, look at recommendations, and then begin any implementation that, that the council would agree on?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think that, I think that would be, be more reasonable. Dick, I think you have a question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask Congressman Snead, you mentioned that your concerns about federal regulations as impacting the city's budget. Do you have any specifics?
Yeah, one is Obamacare, and I think Christie and Beth could tell you all the hoops we have to jump through now due to federal requirements.
That's one.
Yeah, that's one. You got me on the spot, that's one. There are others.
Maybe later, then.
Well, I mean, this, this law about we can't reduce our contributions to the library. Where's that coming from?
It's a county law.
That's a state law.
That's not federal.
State and federal, is what I should've said. If I said federal only.
Thank you very much.
I wanna thank everyone for this hard, hard job that it's been this year, been one of the hardest that I've had during my period on the council. And all of the time that everybody has devoted to this, I think it's been time well spent.
They're waiting, it's two nine now this morning, worrying about this.
And now, maybe we can get some rest and, and go on and move forward from this and continue to make the city of Winchester a great place to, to live and raise our families. And so again, thank you, and we will convene at our council meeting on Tuesday night.
Dick, another one is the building codes, new building codes that are being forced on us from the state. And another one is the ADA compliance issues with trying to build a new sidewalk in Winchester.
Those are state figure.
And federal. ADA's federal. To repair a sidewalk, Dick, we have to buy easements, you know.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Nobody wants to think about that.
You should just repair, if you had a crack in a sidewalk, you should just repair it.
If you get seventy-five, you get sixty-five.
Well, you would get sixty-five. You begin to think about it, too. Sure do. All right, thank y'all.